All right, six forty-three P M Central, Wednesday, September four, twenty twenty-four. Really coming up, Marion City Hall for the Planning Commission meeting. Howdy, Brian. Outstanding.
Hey, Sean, how are you, Stephen? It's nice to like, it's nice to see you.
I know, that's one I had a meeting of a member of the uh, sorry, library.
Oh, really?
To encourage them as a citizen. That they need to sell their property. Not having a Yeah, of course, I talked to Nancy, she's no longer a member, but, you know, I mean, I grew up with her my whole life. She said, uh, kind of get her and she said, "They're idiots, of course they should sell it." What do you mean they're not thinking about selling it? She was fantastic, it was really funny.
Was the library board today?
No.
Oh.
Well.
Yeah, we love this apartment.
I'm like, what are you spending in there? You're saving, you're saving me, I like, you know, it's
Hey, man, the squeaky wheel gets greased, so.
We're set that once and I did die.
It's an old man thing. And just bolted in, he got the same hairdo and colors. No, it's pretty straightforward, I have seen trepidation of one of the Oh, the The six platform. Uh, the storm sewer, early, uh, suicide. To the storm, now for sanitary. He doesn't have to be stringent, I'm trepidatious about it privately. For like, you know, where it's privately maintained by the
Okay, yeah.
That's not for sanitary. No, no, no. Just store. If I put something wrong, that's my fault.
Yeah, I mean.
At least just restored, not the same. Although, say, if you're chasing the view. So, did you get an email?
I just got an email from Nancy about like, hey, we're having your meeting. And that's all your crap.
You usually get emails.
Yeah, with a link, well, usually with a link to the
Fix that.
Okay.
We will take five minutes fix, I'll send you
I'll get it.
I'm gonna validate what I read. Now that you say that, I don't remember seeing the link in mine either.
Oh, boy.
I remember receiving the email.
Yeah, I got the email that said, I got the building permit one, and then I got the, um, you know, the tent, yeah, tonight. Yeah, most of that
We will be having a planning commission meeting, I think, on the twenty-third. But then, I agree, I never received a Brian.
Is there any place you aren't supposed to see?
Yeah, I didn't either. Now, as I said, the Just your various, you know, remind, hey, it's coming up, and then, hey, or who's in it, and
I think we were hyper-focused on having somebody from codes, whatever, packets, since
Which the irony is, the same day that you guys came delivered the packet, I finally received last month's packet in the mail, the same day.
And I still
A month and one week later, now. A month and one week later.
And my, my local mailman just gave me a notice, and he had to deliver our mail here in the city today, but, you know, since I was in here and saying that, I have to buy their permission.
Yeah, same number. Yeah, I know most of these people have related to that, clearly.
Yeah, mine was right here.
And then they provide someone to deliver the mail. Isn't that crazy? Outsourcing. Like everything.
Right.
Travel maker. Well, uh, it's okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's smart. How are you doing? I'm doing all right.
And you put it in
We still have water bottles back there. I don't know where they have them upstairs. I don't know where they're at.
All right, I might just follow you if you got time, sure.
Those are usually the best. Yeah, we make a really old, like, well, wrapping, oh, and then, simple? Yeah, simple, it's delicious, it sounds, it's definitely some cream cheese, I don't Oh, hey. I've got one, um, from our administrator, and it's for cream cheese and rotel, and, uh, a lot of sausage, should be brown sausage, yeah, it's like, that's good. Two kinds, sausage, two kinds of cheese, cream cheese, two kinds of rotel, doesn't it?
So, you're waiting, they need them also always.
Yeah. And so many meetings, right?
Yeah, I understand completely, so, if you go to Go to
YouTube and stuff, they go about, you know, over
Just go to
Oh, yeah, I have my girlfriend's
Hey, Brian, I can get that email either. Where's the link?
It was like, the whole season.
I double-checked, yeah, I did.
The fridges, the fridge is still in there, but there's no, uh, uh, still in there, but no water.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, um, forward it to me. I'm sure you hear it, you're on your computer, sure you'll get it. Yeah, it'll always be, I'd say, always, but it will be there on Wednesday, Wednesday for the meeting. I will look into, because we use an automated
System.
System for all the agendas. You know, we'll, uh, I want you to see my
Yeah.
No, okay, thanks, Brian.
Maybe it's Doesn't like woodwork? I know where he is.
Okay, you're, okay, good, yeah, I will, um, I will, um
How are you? I'm well. Yourself? You're good, yeah, you always are, like, almost, it's been a little while, you know? Yeah, today was, so we didn't have, in the school, if you have kids, you know, you didn't have kids yesterday, so today, true, it was like a Monday, because I was Going on Monday routines, and they went Has it yet, but Ryan showed me how to get to it through the city website, which I didn't even register.
Did you get the links to the meeting stuff? I think it does, no. Yes, I got it, okay, did you get?
No, I just have the document page with one, I just grabbed it from there.
Yeah, go ahead, we'll have time. We, we use an automated agenda system, it's supposed to kick out an email to you all, really, when, when February, so, I will, uh, I will look into that. Hey, Ruben, how are you?
Hey, Brian.
You'll have to back this red line, too. I had my red earlier.
I don't quite get why we still do it the day before, if it's like a work day, you can moderate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, like, it makes sense to wear it on Friday for a Sunday, it's just like
And it is yours now, so, if you're like, that's, we'll see where I see your day.
Cause it, so when I send it to you all, I haven't sent it to me as well, I haven't tried to do it by It's been a while. I don't know, so, and I had been Emailing you all twice, essentially, and so, it's familiar, and everybody getting the email, not that you guys do. Um, I stopped doing them, but they're just, they're gonna get some more to do.
It's working to log into iTunes.
That's what it's telling me to do, too, but, it's look on Agenda Packet.
Yeah, to go to
It's busy today, but I don't think anything before that. Yeah. It was just Oh, okay. Yeah, but our
I think there will be a I would like to resell, I would like to Yeah, we all need to, it's a quick, we all need to know when the package, when it's dropped. What are you doing? That's exactly right.
I get a little worried. Even normally. The other one I could have had, so. Learning that, that's what we do.
Instinct, there's an hour or two between.
Oh.
Yeah, you're here for a while. There's a presentation up on both screens, like I said.
Trying to wear me out for questions. All your kids are gone now.
Yeah, slack water.
You know, places really
I don't know, but I have to be pretty straightforward, I'm heading for a I'm ready, so see what you got, those back there. Well, that's why I'm so Still in the negotiations, huh?
Well, we Tear it up.
I know, we, last time you were here, you said it was kind of, we're back to giving tape with her.
Rough state.
A preliminary design, okay. And, uh, I was just over there walking, and, uh, talked to the neighbors for a while. I already see things I want to adjust.
Yeah.
That's a bad thing about being able to draw anything, I just, I see too many opportunities.
Yeah, you know, you, you know, but seeing yourself is probably not what you want to do.
Yeah. Uh, today, I talked to a guy who lives to the east. Those two kids are out, but Now, I've talked to, talked to people who live to the north. Okay, so we have a toddler. Okay. And, a couple of weeks ago, I was hearing my business cards, I actually make copies and send it to everybody. She said they're all pretty tight-knit, that street. It'll be good, it'll be All right, well, maybe that's my other, I just pulled up
That's coming from a layman's perspective.
Oh, there we go.
A call to order the September fourth, twenty twenty-four Marion Planning Commission meeting, the order. Nancy, will you please pick role?
Yep. Bill Bailey.
Here.
Ruben Crossmeyer.
Here.
Mitchell Fowler.
Here.
Wes Harmon.
Here.
Kelsey Combe.
Here.
Sarah Limbacher.
Here.
Sean McConnell.
Here.
Cole Stevens.
Here.
Thank you.
Commission members have received a copy of the minutes from August the seventh, twenty twenty-four meeting, are there any comments or corrections? Hang on, a second. There was something that caught my eye. I thought I marked it. Bear with me, everybody. Pull that during reading again.
Well, if it, if it's simply like a scribbler or something, like, we can start with change that, if it's a, if you see it later, you know, like, a word that we put in there incorrectly or something, like a the, instead of that, you can certainly It's just a scribbler, we can change it, obviously, if it's something that changes the meaning of somebody's, that's something different, so, right, all right, if you see something like that, just let us know.
Yep. So, the commission members have received any comments, corrections, none, have a motion?
I'd move to approve the meeting minutes of August seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item on the evening's agenda is P eight two four zero 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 three, a request for approval of Saint Joseph's final plat and, and R one, single-family residential district generally located at forty-seven twelve Knox Avenue. Mr. Dyer, please make your presentation.
Thank you. Chirurgy, Chirurgy and Commissioner, Brian Dyer, Community Development Director, both these items this evening are infill plats from residential nature. The first one, as the chair mentioned, is Saint Joseph's final plat, uh, it's located up on the screen there, on the west side of Knox Street, uh, to the north is forty-seventh Street or County Line Road, and to the south, all the way to the south is, uh, forty-ninth Street. Um, this is a property that's approximately about three and a half acres, uh, the property owner is the applicant, and, um, is with us this evening. They have indicated that they plan to, obviously, subdivide the property into six lots, um, and range it in size from twenty-three thousand to thirty-four thousand square feet, and build single-family homes on it. Property itself is owned R one, as is the properties to the north, southeast, and west, so all the properties surrounded are also zoned R one. Um, the properties to the east and the north are, uh, developed with single-family homes, and then, the properties to the south and the west are generally undeveloped, to the west, um, the northern section, you can see, um, here, in existence, R one, the more older homesteads in Marion, you can just, uh, see that existing home. But generally speaking, um, the area, specifically the property, um, is undeveloped, it's been used over time mostly for agriculture, has remained undeveloped. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the applicant is looking to subdivide the property into six lots for the construction of single-family homes. Property is currently not so, not served by sanitary sewer or water. Appken is well, well aware of the city requirements that any new residential, um, structures are to be connected to a public sanitary sewer system. He's already begun the conversations and the process with John Ken, John's Canyon Waste Water to provide sanitary sewer to the site, uh, and he is aware that the city will not be issuing any building permits until, uh, those sanitary sewer and other, uh, public, um, utilities are provided to the site. Additionally, uh, staff has been working with the applicant and their engineers in regards to a stormwater masterplan for it, it's gonna be, um, large lot, uh, so we're not overly concerned about the stormwater masterplan for it. Um, most primary concern is making sure that the grading works for the whole, uh, development, and then also establishing the internal mechanism for the upkeep and maintenance of the storm sewer system. The internal mechanism could be something like a homeowners association, restrictive covenants, or some other, um, mechanism for that. Uh, so, uh, staff does anticipate, uh, working with, continuing to work with the applicant as the, as he, uh, works through the ultimate grading plan and the ultimate, uh, structure for the storm sewer, uh, for the property. Those are all conditions of approval that are contained within the staff report, and all those conditions of approval must be met before the city will release the plat for, um, course, uh, filing with the county. Uh, there's adequate right-of-way on, uh, existing right-of-way on Knox, so there's no additional right-of-way dedications, and the applicant has dedicated, uh, or is dedicating the required, um, necessary utility easements. We'll go to the plat, we'll sit and talk about it. The other thing to note, uh, that, uh, planning commissioners may notice, there is an access easement that runs along the back of here, that access easement is to the benefit of the property owner, that is to, um, look at to the west of the property. Uh, applicant is going to work with that access easement, obviously, um, it's existing, and in regards to, uh, getting the u- utility easements outside of that access easement, um, so, that is one other item of note for this. Appken is present here this evening, and, uh, staff will be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners may have.
Does the commission have, does the commission have any questions for staff?
Uh, this is just for my own clarification and understanding, in the language, uh, the applicant is wearing requirements of working with the public sewer to the property, um, for extending sanitary to the property, does that mean to each individual plant, for each individual house that's being created?
So, um, there is, the applicant has to do a sanitary sewer, um, main extension, and then from that main extension, that's where the actual service lines will go to each one of the houses. So, um, again, not knowing how the applicant is going to assess any kind of fee, any kind of those charges to the property owners, um, that are future property owners, I have been conversational with him, I think he does intend to do the construction of all the homes there, but, say, there was one of the last were sold to somebody else, um, that person would be responsible for the service line. Uh, applicant would still, is still responsible for the service, for the sewer main line, so, um, that, that's just, uh, so when we say extending to, um, provide sanitary sewer to each one of those lots, that is gonna be something John's Canyon Waste Water reviews, so, I really can't map out how they're gonna, how they're gonna do.
Now, extension to that, uh, uh, main extension from sanitary, uh, department, whatever.
Jay, John's Canyon Waste Water.
Yeah, John's Canyon Waste Water, um, that's within the easement of perhaps Knox, is that where, is it coming in somewhere three hindquarters?
So, I do believe it'll be along, it'll be along Knox, if I remember correctly, um, there's already easements being shown for that along the property.
Just having trouble re-trampling it, and Yeah.
Let's follow me on the front.
Okay.
And again, uh, also, in anticipation that it may be likely, John's Canyon Waste Water may have different ideas on how they can, might be
Sure, yeah.
Which might be surprising, uh, the applicant always can do, um, file, uh, any kind of necessary easements by a super interest, and so, the applicant can always, uh, once his plat's filed, once his plat, even if it's not filed, go down to, uh, John's Canyon Register, uh, deeds and file a super interest.
Okay, that eases my concern.
So, yeah, then he will be working closely, very, very close to John's Canyon Waste Water, again, um, he is a, a home builder and has experienced, has experience in working with those folks.
Thank you.
Any more questions from commission? I need some nods down there, give me something. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation to the commission? If so, okay, send your name, address, telephone number, where are you?
Um, my name is Kevin Klassen, I bought the property, I live currently over in Mission, near fifty-fifth and, uh, Knoll, near, near, near Maple Street, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but I don't have anything to present further than what Mr. Dyer's already presented.
Commission, do you have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Does the commission have any, uh, any additional questions for staff? Hearing none? You have a motion?
I move that the planning commission approve the conditions listed in the staff report for the P A two four dash zero 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 three, Saint Joseph's final plat for property generally located at forty-seven twelve Knox Avenue, and forwarding it to the city council for the acceptance of easements and the right-of-way dedicated by the plat.
Second?
Second.
Any additional discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order of business? Bix Brook, is that right?
Uh, that, that's right, we, at staff level, that has been a tongue twister for us as well.
Bix Brook final plat, uh, P A two four zero 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 four, request for approval of Bix Brook final plat in an R one, single-family residential district generally located in the sixty-five hundred block of Hardy Street. Mr. Dyer?
Thank you, Chair, also, we also will call sometime, call it Also, we also will sometime call it Brick's Brook plat, so, or I will spell it as Brick's Brook, and I appreciate the means and Jasmine pointing out that I yet again made it a brick instead of dick. So, this is property, again, as the Chair mentioned, located in sixty-five hundred block of Hardy Street. It's up there on the screen, just to get you a little bit more oriented. So, this is Hardy Street, this is the cul-de-sac bowl. Craig Street is over here running parallel with Hardy, and the access to the street, the only access back in here is Sixty-Fifth Street, which is right here towards the top. So, you can take Shawnee Mission Parkway to Craig, then get down to Sixty-Fifth Street, go back to the west, and you can head south down to here. Little bit more about Hardy Street, while I'm talking about it, is Hardy Street was the street that the city redid back in twenty twenty twelve, when we were doing a lot of our residential streets to bring them up to city standard with curb and gutter and underground storm sewer. This street was also a street that we, the city, added a cul-de-sac to the end of it, and I think that's important to note because the cul-de-sac bowl is somewhat undersized in what a standard fifty to sixty-foot right-of-way cul-de-sac bowl is. It's thirty feet, thirty-five feet of right-of-way, but I did want to point that out, that that is what the city installed at the time based upon the topography of the existing street and also still to provide a turnaround and still meet any kind of EMS requirements for turning around in it down there. So, again, the purpose of this plat is to consolidate a number of small remnant parcels. Again, staff, give us kudos to the applicant for assembling these parcels. There's, I believe, if I remember right, it's three remnant parcels that are located down here, and it's approximately point three five acres or fifteen thousand six hundred fifty-nine square feet that is the amount, and those parcels are consolidated, and the applicant is putting together the plat and replat into one lot. The property is owned R one, single-family, as all the property around it is owned, single-family as well. As you can see, it is currently, it has remained for quite a while, undeveloped. It's actually a very interesting tree lot, it's quite lovely down there. There is, Hardy Street does did cul-de-sac on the other end, you can see a little bit down here on the map, so there is single-family homes further to the south of them, just off the screen there. The property does have sanitary, does have access to sanitary sewer and water. There is a sidewalk that is on the west side of Hardy that the applicant is aware of, that understands that he will, they will be responsible for extending that sidewalk around, through his lot to provide access, pedestrian access to the home. The applicant has indicated that he is an architect and does plan to design and build his own single-family home on this lot. With that, applicant is here, present, and staff will be happy to answer any questions that the planning commissioners may have.
Commission, get any questions? Commission, get any questions?
Brian, I've got one. Is the reason that it was undeveloped because it was those three separate lots?
And there's also, there is a lot of history in there. I do know a little bit too much of the history. There's also was a right, old right-of-way that went through here, I can't remember which street it was, but I've seen that went through here, that was also in existence down there. So, not only were there multiple remnant parcels, there was also old right-of-way, and that right-of-way really made it the lot, so the parcels wouldn't be, even bringing them together would not meet requirements for R one. So, when we redid the street in twenty twenty twelve, as part of that, staff, I did, had the surveyors who did the work on the design of the street to also survey that up and prepare a vacation of right-of-way for it. So, we also vacated the right-of-way for it, and then I think the parcels went through a couple of different ownerships, and finally I got to an owner who realized the interest in the lot, had value of the lot, and purchased it for development. But, yeah, it's just interesting how parcels and lots get chopped up over time, but again, putting them back together so you can have a buildable lot. I guess I forgot that there is the plat itself, and it kind of again gives a little bit of indication, but you can look all the way around it to see the very old, much older configuration of lots from, I would want to guess, the early nineteen hundreds. That's one of the reasons why it was such a, it's, was such a, had such, so many different little pieces, parts to it.
So, Bix Brook is the old-timey name of the plat and not because the applicant is Bickford, they got renamed for?
No, that is.
That's great.
I have a question. Is the applicant wanting the city to finish that roundabout on that corner?
So, the roundabout is already finished, and the cul-de-sac is already finished. What the applicant is going to do as part of this plat is dedicate, I don't know why, but we, when we did this, we only required a right-of-way easement, which is not right-of-way, so the applicant, the only thing they need to do is to dedicate that right-of-way, and then the only other public improvement they're going to need to make is there's a sidewalk that comes down here, they will need to extend that sidewalk across their property. But this cul-de-sac is already there, as well as storm sewer too. There's a storm sewer inlet right here that goes to the south.
If you haven't been down there to observe that parcel and everything, I encourage the commissioners to drive down there. It is quite interesting how it became convoluted, and now we're getting it straightened out.
Very quiet street, it's, it really is a really cool lot.
Any other questions for staff, Commission? Does the applicant wish to make a presentation to the Commission? State your name, address, where you live, and your apartment number, please.
Yes, Scott Bickford, and my address, six one six Shawnee Road, Kansas City, Kansas. And I don't really have much to add from what Brian said. My wife and I just moved to Marion.
And you're the architect?
I'm an architect, yes.
What was your last name again?
Bickford, B I C K F O R D.
Okay.
Don't know if I can answer any questions?
Questions, Commission? Thank you, sir. Does the Commission have any further questions for staff? You'll have a motion?
I move that the Planning Commission approve with the conditions listed in the staff report, PA twenty-four dash zero 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 four, Bix Brook final plat for property generally located in the sixty-five hundred block of Hardy Street, and forwarding it to the City Council for the acceptance of easements and right-of-way dedicated by the plat.
The staff was in the nation. Have a second?
The second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the next order of business would be the capital improvement program twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine.
This is, this is generally what the Planning Commission is requiring in regards to the city's capital improvement program, state statutes, and also your home city ordinance require the Planning Commission, two choices when it comes to the CIP, either to review each and every CIP project that comes through the pipe before it happens, or to review the CIP plan as a whole and review it in regards to its conformance with the Marion comprehensive plan. The CIP for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine time period continues the city's work and focus on downtown Marion and our Marion Drive improvements. It also includes this year, the West Side of Fifth Street Bridge, just a little bit more about that. That's a bridge over I thirty-five. We are working in partnership with Overland Park. There is maintenance that needs to be done on that bridge, and so significant maintenance, and so we are working with Overland Park on that project and sharing the cost for it, so that is an important item that is in this year's CIP, as well as our continuing upgrading pedestrian bicycle facilities and mobility enhancements. If you remember, we recently adopted a transportation plan that includes multimodal, and as we do in streets, and as we have opportunities, we're installing bike lanes, bike routes, and other facilities like that, and additionally, we continue to have a significant amount of sidewalk repairs and infills as we see the opportunity for that, and then as well as also improving our stormwater system. Obviously, one of the big items in the CIP is the Corps of Engineers Upper Turkey Creek Flood Mitigation Program. That is obviously going to be a significant investment by the city if the City Council approves going forward with it, and so that is one of the items that takes up a significant part of the CIP. Again, your comprehensive plan has a number of goals that fit with the CIP. One of the two that staff highlights is the goal, Plan Goal Number Three is quality public services, obviously provision of recreation and infrastructure for public services, and the CIP, I forgot to mention that the Parks and Rec Plan is also part of this CIP. So, providing those services, quality services meet Plan Goal Number Three, and then Plan Goal Number Seven, transportation and safety and mobility, that obviously is a big part of what this year's CIP is, again, doing sidewalk repairs, doing sidewalk infill, and allowing for striping and allowing for provisions of multimodal facilities. So, with that, staff's presentation, this is also an opportunity that the Planning Commissioners can take to, if there's some projects or things that the city have a look at in the future CIP. Great example is probably about five years ago now, the Planning Commission put a focus and made comments about wanting to do more sidewalk infill and repair. That was something that was reflected in the minutes, and I know that the City Council read that and noticed that, and I do think that was part of the reasons why, one, many reasons why the City Council started putting more into the sidewalks. So, with that, we'll be happy to answer your questions, be also happy to, any comments that the commissioners have, have those reflected in the minutes as well.
Commission, have any questions for the staff?
Yes.
I'm sure. I have a two.
I have several, but I'm only going to stick to one. Yeah, sorry. I have several, but I'm going to stick to one, and that's the one you're used to hearing under, and I like that it fits under Plan Goal Number Seven, transportation and safety and mobility states, and that is in regards to continuing to put some focus, and I would be interested in tonight's agenda and forum to hear any of your guys' inputs around a walking bridge or walking scenario over Shawnee Mission Parkway, Shawnee Mission Parkway, in regards to accessing to the new Grand Station, the park, and over here to this side of Shawnee Mission Parkway, to utilize our facilities, our, the new library, the community center, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'd like, I know I bring it up every opportunity I have, but I'd like to hear some of your guys' feedback if you have. That's all I have to say.
Well, I agree with that completely, and just one, you know, on that same thing, we, at one point, it was discussed that maybe there'd be a tunnel underneath. That's probably not realistic, right?
Yeah, I don't think so, but the tunnel was, the tunnel was an idea and a thought, but it is, the main purpose is, the main purpose of the tunnel was to have the pedestrian connectivity that did require crossing one, two, three, four, five lanes of traffic at a stoplight. So, something like a pedestrian bridge would definitely serve the same function as.
And I think that the bridge is a better idea, myself anyway, I just thought it.
I would agree with the bridge. Not sure how many stairs, levels it would be, but if it was ramped up, where you could walk up a ramp, try to walk across and come back down. Since we've done away, or will be doing away with the overhead power lines, it would Where do we go from here, Brian?
There's other comments about the bridge, I think the other commissioners, if they have other comments.
Yes.
I have one, just, I think it's a great idea in figuring out how we can connect with the library, decide what, helping them decide what to do with their building, because then that adds a nice landing place on the south or the north side of Shawnee Mission Parkway for that, and I don't know how that can tie into our strip plan.
Another comment on that is that it would be nice if it was something that could be, you know, like maybe some artwork involved in it, make it like a sort of a focus, so to speak, with some lighting and things like that.
You know, I just want to echo their points, like, you know, my wife runs across Shawnee Mission Parkway quite a bit and has to wait, you know, a long time for the lights, and, you know, that's just, she's just one person, you know, if you're, you know, a family with, you know, kids, stroller, that sort of thing, it takes a long time to get across. And I think the bridge would just be logistically a little bit easier. Is it Fairway that has that bridge, that tunnel underneath Shawnee Mission Parkway by Green Day Books? I think they are deprecating that tunnel just because of maintenance, so I think that's just another thing to think about.
My comment is on the, on the bridge, I can see pros and cons of this. Pros being, that's what we've talked about, cons being to be compliant with ADA and strollers and, you know, people that have to get up and down the steps. I don't know how these would be to have, I'm thinking like an escalator, but that would be cost-effective, right?
So, I do not know enough about pedestrian access bridges to speak any kind of knowledge on it, but I do, I mean, any type of bridge like that would have to have considerations for, for mobility and ADA issues, I believe.
And I would agree, that should, I mean, that's a critical part of that. I mean, you have two kids and, you know, anyone who has a disability, including kids with a stroller, you want them to have the easiest possible way to do that. I totally agree. I also like the idea, and it's been a conversation, there is a public garden, and one of our conversations was, if there ever was a bridge, that's a perfect opportunity for a gateway type of scenario that really defines and says, hey, you're in Marion, and it's pretty doggone cool here, for lack of a better way to put it.
I'd be interested in seeing along Shawnee Mission Parkway, just for, if it is a bridge that is fully accessible and needs to be ADA and ANSI, just where that would work well, because it is a large footprint, just to ramp up to where you get to go over. If it's a fully ANSI compliant, you have to have twelve feet, twelve feet of run for every one foot varieties, and it just eats up a lot of space quickly.
On both sides?
Yeah, on both sides, and there's landing requirements for every fifty feet, it just, it gets to be a lot fast.
Right, and, right, I am looking, not near or near knowledgeable enough to speak about these, about that type of bridge, but I, those are issues that we will have to address.
I almost wonder, with that corridor receiving conditional development, maybe if there's another developer coming along the way, that Yeah, I almost wonder, uh with that corridor receiving additional development, maybe if there's another developer coming along the way, that would be a good incentive to have that wrapped into a commercial project and lessen the load on the city.
Agreed. I definitely think it's kind of our position to facilitate that occurring, but yeah, totally agree.
Are there other um pedestrian access bridges in the metro area that, you know, not that I'm aware of?
And I can't think of. I've seen them in other cities, you know, I travel a lot, as you all know, and I see them in a lot of other cities, all of them meeting ADA requirements, and yeah, their their approach and and exit strategies are lengthy. I think it could be done on ours, I just think it takes some creative thinking. Um I think the library property is a critical element of that, the existing old Johnson County Library property. Um but, you know, again, that's out of our control, other than to help create avenues for facilitation through city council and et cetera. That's the only way we'll ever see something like that happen. I think there's a, the only reason I consistently bring it up is I see this as a pretty narrow window of opportunity before it closes completely, and we never have the opportunity again. Um based on all the things that have occurred with Grand Station, the old library closing, et cetera, et cetera. I brought it up, as we've all known numerous times, with the developer of Grand Station, um who would be obviously excited and open in whatever way they can. And I'm sure they don't really want to do it economically, but you know, we'll see what happens, right? We have to try.
For the comments?
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh I've got, it's on a different subject, so if you're.
Same.
Um Brian, for the Upper Turkey Creek Drainage, um it's got a pretty wide uh year range, twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-one, does that just depend on when the USACE has funding for it?
Uh no, um the that is, the funding um from USACE, United States Corps, Army Corps of Engineers. Um is is not the main driver of that timeframe. The main driver of that timeframe is just working through the process.
Okay.
Um because the Corps of Engineers is working right now and putting together thirty percent plans. Once they get to thirty percent plans, they will then have cost estimates. And at that point in time, there will need to be some decisions made by all of the partners in the project of wanting to go forward with the project. And then from that point, then there's still um acquisition utilities that that are probably gonna be a two-year process for acquisition of utilities. Um so, you know, if there's a decision made next year, that's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven is when the utilities and property will probably be acquired, so. Yeah, when you start, that's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got, now you get to.
Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Just, I'm excited to continue to see how the downtown Marion Drive continues to develop. Um you know, just seeing our other communities, Shawnee, Mission, how they really revitalize their downtowns, it's exciting. And it's hard to be patient for um our Marion downtown, so it's exciting.
Mitch, you got anything?
Yeah, I was thinking about the fifty-seven oh one project, uh had the Corps of Engineers. Given given the city any green lights or indications that they might be able to continue with that, or?
So so the fifty-seven oh one is also rolled into downtown Marion as well as the Upper Turkey Creek Project. So um it comes as no surprise, um the next big milestone and decision point with the Corps of Engineers project is when they get to thirty percent uh plans. And at that point in time, uh said decision will need to be made by all of the partners in the project. And how that interacts with fifty-seven oh one will be, you know, depends on which direction, um um the various company bodies wanted to go with the project. A decision not to go with the U uh USACE's with the Corps of Engineers project, when the fifty-seven oh one might play a different role. But his decision is to go forward with the Corps of Engineers project, you know, it could probably be part of the overall um development of downtown Marion.
Could we move back to the Overland Park? What is needed and Brian to just get a. Overview of how it would lay out of the Shawnee Mission.
Of the um over a bridge? Um uh yeah, that's, it's really, it's tricky, because we don't know where it's gonna land, don't know how much space is gonna be taken up. Um I I, you know, I, we can um inquire with the city engineer to see exactly if he has ideas and thoughts of being able to put together some general mock-up of. You know, what something like that would look like, um so we can definitely um, you know, talk to the city administrators, see if there's a desire to. Um maybe have him, him, the city engineer, do some like very, very, very preliminary uh looking at, you know, what it would take.
Well, there's not too many locations to go vertical, to go over.
Correct, correct.
I mean, you've got Annie, you've got Slater, and you've got E D.
Yeah.
Ikea, you've got Wey, so.
And and so there's also the visitor's center as well, so um there's, there are some various different places, but um like I said, we can definitely um. Uh see if there's a desire to maybe have the city engineer do some very preliminary thoughts, sketches.
I think there ought to be a concept put together. Working back, whoever needs to think that need. All that, so.
Okay.
You need them.
I do need a motion to for if the for the um planning commission to find that the um CIP is in conformance with the Marion Conference of Plan, so I do need a motion to that, yes. I'm gonna.
What would get there? Is that for the whole?
Yes, it's for the whole CIP, and then obviously, all the comments that we made will be put into the minutes.
Okay, so that's another comment.
Okay.
For another I O. Does the community center hold their maintenance and everything come out of the CIP stuff?
Um do you not believe so, no, I believe the maintenance.
This is public works.
Uh maintenance and stuff, I believe, probably comes out of their own, their own community center line item of the general fund. But okay.
I have two questions, Brian.
Yeah.
Uh the bridge repair on Seventy Fifth Street, is that just for structural repair and not changing the traffic pattern on that street?
That is correct, it is for structural repair, um I'll probably get it wrong, but it's um one of the here support structures that's on the east side of the train, excuse me. West side of the train tracks needs significant repair.
Okay, and then the second question I had, um we had some some maintenance issues pop up recently, like the Sinkle on Knox Street and the River and Antioch.
Mm-hmm.
Does that affect the twenty-five CIP at all, or is that a different fund?
That is actually a different entity completely. My understanding is that um the Sinkle was a situation of Water One having a failed pipe, which then impacted a storm superpipe that caused that Sinkle. So that actually, I don't know how much came out of our maintenance, or how much that was all of Water One's responsibility for doing. But if that had been a fa- if if it had just been a failed stormwater pipe that caused that Sinkle, then it most likely would have come out of, there is in the CIP. Um a line item for um stormwater repairs, and most likely would have come out, came out there.
Okay, I move that the planning commission find the city of Marion in twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program be in performance with Marion Conference of Plan twenty forty?
Second?
I have a second, all my favorites say aye.
Aye.
All tows. Okay, moving to the planning commission to approve the twenty twenty-five commission.
Um this, for twenty twenty-five, uh holidays had a pretty uh really juggled us around, so uh Nancy worked hard and trying to miss the holidays as best we could. But I will run you through all the different changes and nuances that the holidays ca- caused. So again, we're just talking for twenty twenty-five, so for twenty twenty-five, your January meeting is typical Wednesday, January meeting, would it be on uh New Year's Day? So that uh meeting will be moved, if we need to have it, to Thursday, the second. Um and then because of Memorial Day, all May planning commission items will go to the June ninth city council agenda instead of the typical second uh agenda meeting of the month. Excuse me, second city council agenda of the month. There is, as we have done now for a number of years, we don't have any meetings scheduled in July, for the July, first part of July because of July fourth holiday. And then the December twenty twenty-five planning commission items um will be heard at the January twelfth city council meeting because of Christmas. Um so again, uh lots of uh holidays, we're having a pretty significant impact, but uh we're able to manage it and uh get schedule put together.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move that the planning commission approved the twenty twenty-five planning commission calendar as is.
Second?
Second, all my favorites say aye.
Aye.
All tows. Mr. Dyer?
Um really don't, I'd already, as part of the CIP, I gave a pretty good update of where we are with the Upper Turkey Creek Project. Um continuing to move forward, Corps of Engineers continues to move forward, and we continue to have lots of meetings. Um so there is progress that's being made, um perhaps not as fast as the city of Marion, which other folks were um are used to, but it is going forward. Um Marion Grand Station, uh they're continuing to stay, continue to stay on schedule, they are still looking for to have that project all done um mid twenty twenty-five. If you haven't been over there, seen it, the canopy that's up over there, it's a really significant and fantastic feature. They are planning now, and we are working with them to have partial occupancy in October, towards the end of October, for the apartment building that is to the east, the apartment building next to Antioch. So we'll have, we have some, i- if the if plans are met, and and they will plan, they will have folks in there in October, November, whilst you have occupants. Um and we're starting to see a number of businesses open up, uh the next set of businesses that will most likely open up will be the Kava and the Jersey Mikes. Those are businesses that are in the retail buildings that are up in the northeast corner of the developments, so that continues to move along again, and they're really uh staying around on schedule. Um we also still have on schedule getting the undergrounding of utilities done, um and we're all hoping that every G will get that out and get that bid. And we'll have that done by um the end of year, so they're still, last I heard, that was still, so. Um that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the planning commissioners may have, but I mean.
You said by the end of the year for every G.
They're still shooting for the end of the year, last I heard.
End of the year, or?
To have it, oh, have it undergrounded, um.
Oh, yeah, right. That's. What about the over end?
Pardon?
What about the over end lines?
They'll take, they'll take those out at the same time, so again, last I heard, the end of the year, those lines should be gone.
All things are subject to change.
Yeah, they they act like once they get on site and get going, they're gonna get with it.
Has there been any announcement about the last uh full-service restaurant?
There is not.
Okay.
There's not, in fact, the, so that would be the space that is next to Homegrown, which is the area that's backed there by the canopy. That space, they've actually um uh put in a demising wall, so they did essentially provide that space in half, but they have not announced terms for it yet.
What's Homegrown open?
Don't know, don't know when they're gonna be open or not. Like I said, the Kava and Jersey Mikes up front are gonna be the ones that are most, that most likely will be the next few openings.
Is Supplement, is Supplement Superstore the only one currently open?
And um um Chicago Starberg.
Okay.
Well.
That's all I got.
Still buying property up on Marion?
Yeah, when the opportunity arises, um we are, uh so um I don't think, since the last time I updated you, you know, that was last month, I don't think, you know, we haven't acquired any additional properties since then.
So what's the timeline to get the seven eleven?
So so let's be clear, that is not a seven eleven, staff never said it was a seven eleven.
No, well, but the Post or somebody said.
I know, I know, I know, I've had lots of questions, like, I never said, I said it was originally a seven eleven, but.
But so it's not a seven, not gonna be a seven eleven?
I do not believe so.
I thought the guy was lying to me, when he said it'd be like seven eleven, only up more upscale, okay.
Yeah, I do not believe it's gonna be a seven eleven, so I do not believe, no, I do not have any plans, they, their next step is they need to get the plat filed, and they also need to get the final development approved. So they still have a few more steps to go before the, you know, building permit issue. Um we do, they did allow, they they'd have submitted, and it was quite a, quite a number of months ago, they did submit the tenant finish for the um for the um convenience store. But then they for, they didn't go forward with any more re-providing comments, they didn't do any revisions to the applicant, to the building permit application, because they decided, they also wanted to do all. They wanted the gas pumps installed kind of at the same time, so um and then they still need to do a final development plan, um and compile that plat.
We're covering up the place on Seventy Fifth.
Yep, Seventy Fifth and Switzer.
Across the street from where a quick trip is.
Yeah, quick trip.
That's gonna be a busy place.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they'll keep the gas prices down there, too.
Be interesting.
Any information on AMC when they are starting there?
Nope, uh we we do not, you know, have many indications of when they're gonna start.
Any other new businesses coming in?
And that's all I have for the season.
I have a question for you, Brian, where are this, the demolition of the newly acquired properties uh on Berry Lane?
Uh I will need to, I will find out, I know we put out the request for proposal for bids, and I do believe that bid was awarded. Um and I do know that the fire department, police department did training on those, um but I will, uh if I get a chance tomorrow, I will uh get a little bit more info for you.
Seven eleven left, a historical spot, like there, to me, where, you know, you've been around for a while, yeah, man.
What are those houses built?
I can't remember, those those two houses, I do not know, don't know.
Mitch?
No, the only thing I remember, I I don't remember that house as much as I do the building next to the Marshall Arts Place. It used to be a bead store or something like that, back when I was going to South Park Elementary, so, no.
Anything else, Brian?
No, that's it, it's the first season.
I'll entertain. Motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
Second?
Second.
For adjournment.
I will also, before we go, this is, I just wanna, sounds like some folks had some problems with the emails, getting the links, so I am going to go back to, so we have automated automated um agenda system that sends out those email links. And then I was for a while resending them to you, so you're essentially getting two emails, I'm gonna go back to resend you, so you're gonna get two emails if if the automated one comes through, so. Um I will go back to sending you all just from my own uh. Um, I will go back to sending you all, just from my own, uh, business email from, uh, sending those links out to you as well. So again, I apologize for not getting those to you, uh, some of those, so just wanted to let you know.